So we have the tribal executive board. We don't know where we're going. The tribal executive board, they wanted us to submit treaties to them for possible acting county directors. So we submitted treaties to them. Nope, we don't like that one, we don't like that one, we don't like that one.
So, why not? Well, the three names we submitted, we needed to right the ship for the government to rig, so our number one recommendation was to bring back Iva Gray here for thirty days. Second was naming Adams, who said she would step down off of the board committees. And the third one was Michelle. So if the tribe asked us to do that, we had an emergency meeting and did it. And they, ten of them refused, all of them. And so this morning, they were supposed to come up with a list, which they did not.
They won't have a list?
So, so last week, um, then our contractors get paid on Thursday. So we re-recognized Michelle.
Obviously.
And some of the employees...
Didn't like it.
Finally, one of them went running to tribal council, and they essentially bullied her, and where she stepped out of that job because they were saying she had no authority. So from Monday of last week, there was nobody to sign those contracts. The contractors did not get paid. The tribal executive board was blaming us, but it was their action. Why did it get paid? We had an emergency meeting with our attorney.
On Thursday.
And he said that our board chair can't sign the contracts, which were signed the next morning, and the check signers, we signed the checks. They were blaming the check signers, and I wouldn't sign the checks.
We were getting drawn out to the bus day, oh, the board, we're not paying you guys, that's why you're not getting paid. So they went out to the tribal executive board, we all got email from the chairman. Contractors aren't there, you gotta get them paid. How do you pay if you're familiar with the process of procurement? We can't just pay somebody because we want to. There's pay me on your ball. We can't even pay, we cannot pay a contract unless our chief officer, our executive director, signs off on that contract. We didn't have anybody to sign off on that contract. So our payroll person, or our house payable, couldn't print a check. Because these are federal dollars, you don't mess with federal dollars when you have to dock your eyes and cross your teeth. So we were getting drawn out to the bus day, oh, it's all bad, they don't want, they don't want to sign checks. Well, there are no checks we can sign, because we couldn't print them. So we had an emergency meeting on Thursday at five thirty, and that was our attorney. And he told us, well, your board chair should be able to sign off on those contracts. Mike signed those contracts, checks were printed, the very midst of last Friday, Chuck, Michael, like, uh, Gressel, like, signed those checks, contractors got paid. So we were getting the question, well, why are you guys having an emergency meeting on Thursday? Wait until Tuesday, it's all regular meeting. So I asked those contractors that Thursday, I said, you guys don't get paid tomorrow, do you want to wait until Tuesday to get paid? Because that's what our regular meeting is. Oh, no, no, we don't want to get forced to get paid today.
You heard the category, category?
Well, something like that.
Board. So I have a question about contractors.
Yeah.
So, the native or non-native contractors, should each one of them be licensed and bonded?
Yes.
So that they're not getting paid? Because this has happened in the past, they've gotten paid four or six times to fix the same problem that should have been fixed the first time.
Yes.
And if their licenses are bonded, then they shouldn't be getting paid every single time to fix that same exact problem. So, because I know for a fact that there was a non-native contractor that he had to show that he was licensed and bonded, so are treating our native the same way? Because if we were off the reservation, every contractor, if there was a big housing corporation running like, Port Pet Housing is, every contractor, regardless of your nationality, your ear roll, whatever, you would have to be licensed and bonded. That would have avoided that whole fiasco with...
Exactly.
With, um, that whole down air.
And I wish Michelle was here, because she would, she would tell you that she was told to sign checks by an employee who's not even her supervisor. You need to pay these contractors, you've got to sign those checks. She refused to sign them because they were not licensed or bonded.
So whose, so whose job is that, to make sure contractors are licensed and bonded? So they're not getting paid five, ten, whatever, how many, six hours, how many times to fix the same problem on a house that should have been fixed the first time?
Modernization.
Modernization.
Plus the, the two, um, maintenance workers, two supervisors. So Wayne Weeks is modernization, Alan Spudable is one of the copper east end maintenance, west end is, um, Ray Oscar.
You know what, maybe, maybe pay the contractors to use good lumber, good whatever, fix it good the first time, so that it's gonna stand the test of time, you know, over these houses, because some of them...
Well, inspect, how do they pass inspection? So those are questions that we have, that we're trying to bring forward. We know housing has issues. And when we start questioning, they run out to the tribal council. Tribal council turns around and slaps their hand and says, quit doing that. And then, we don't, didn't terminate anybody, but our acting director did. For cause, there was reason why those terminations were done, and we support her in that. We were told, just today, we were told in our BOC meeting by tribal board member, you need to remember they have families, you can't be firing everybody. Well, we're not trying to fire everybody. If they're doing their jobs, they're getting paid fifty-four dollars an hour, shouldn't they be doing their jobs? I would think so, and I said, and I'm sure tribal council or the TV or the tribes have terminated people in the past for not doing their jobs, whether they have families or not. I have a family, there's nobody protecting me right now from the onslaught of public scrutiny, but I just say, bring it on. I can withstand scrutiny, I'm not afraid of it, but if you're scrutinizing me, you're gonna gamble and make sure you're scrutinizing everybody else. Everybody, treat everybody the same.
I guess because people, there's so much of a whirlwind of talk. When the, when the, what happened to the former director? Before the well, what happened to that director?
Who was it? Oh, Neil Taylor, he resigned.
And what happened to the director before that?
They terminated him.
They terminated him for cause.
The previous board commissioner.
Okay, so that one got terminated and the other one didn't stay?
Yep.
He stayed for like, three weeks.
And then, and then internally, that other director was brought in?
Well, we advertised, and then we had only two applicants. One was Iva, and the other one was the one that ended up getting hired.
So, I just, if you, if you could categorize the three issues categorically? Is it low ground, is it status quo, that's even protective? Or low working standards? Is it like internal complaints? I don't think you can separate that from policy and procedures, because if you have a problem, there are steps of procedures to follow. So, is it, is it just uncovering a lot of things that we're gonna do?
I think it's uncovering, because one of the reports Michelle gave us as HR, uh, she was looking, because there was a lot, a lot of employees call in every day at housing. Every day, they're calling in, uh, coming in late. So she did an analysis of time and attendance on employees. There was one employee, and just, for those of you who don't know, there are two thousand and eighty hours in one full year. If you work twelve months, you work two thousand and eighty hours. There was one employee that was supposed to work two thousand and eighty hours, worked less than half of that for the whole year. Is that alarming or not? I thought it was, and it's like, what are we gonna do about this? So, we're trying to, we see some areas that need to be fixed, and we're trying to do it, and some on the tribal council will say, well, yeah, you guys are doing it by, I don't like your leadership style, is what they told Michelle, and you need to be a little more professional, and you can't be firing people. Uh, we can, she can fire people if they're not doing their job. And I know, I know a lot of you have had your own experiences with housing. I'm a board of commissioners, and I'll tell you, there's sometimes, I call over there, I can't get through. Nobody's answering the phones.
How many people work there? That was the other question.
Forty-two. And on average, eleven to seventeen call in every single day. All Michelle, all Michelle's in there, all the board commissioners. We want, we want employees to come to work and do their job that they're hired for. Now, when Michelle started to correct that, oh, it's her management style, no, Michelle comes from extensive federal background, where you come to work and you do your job. We're not thinking on anybody, just do your job.
So, so we can say HR is a department in itself that's a problem, because it involves all four...
Well, we just not created an HR position and department, which, and then Michelle was hired for that position. So that's a brand new...
Oh.
To try to fix all these areas.
No, not brand new.
Oh, something happened part-time.
When we came on, our accountant and our attorney said those duties need to be separated. We had one employee that did all of these functions. I mean, you pay payroll, you put your own payroll, you pay yourself, and you pay your family, you pay yours for whatever your name is, and you can't do that, you do these every day for ethics.
And for audit costs.
So we created three separate positions. One did payroll, one did, um, HR, one did, um, finance officer. And things were going good, but, um, the issue was, after we terminated the director, and we appointed Michelle, and she started holding us accountable, we had a group of seven sign their letter, send it to the tribes with a demand by four-thirty, that a few didn't resolve this issue, that they were gonna walk out. So they did the whole one office, but two employees walked out. Two days, and they didn't come in, they were two in copper that did the same. And, um, from that point on, they were allowed to bypass chain of command in housing, and go directly to councilman and the chairman, and they all took one side. The Northern Plank reporter printed that article without any rebuttal. Nobody asked us for the side of it. I mean, it was essentially like a hostage situation. If I, if I did that in my job, you know, I'd be gone, probably really be gone. You don't threaten. When this came up at the tribal council, Rita Weeks asked me, what are you guys gonna do? I said, well, let me ask you this, what if a hundred and fifty tribal employees did this? What would your response be? That's not what I asked you. That is, because you can call us out for trying to do our jobs and make people accountable for those federal dollars, but you don't wanna make your own employees accountable. But they, they watch everything, and it's, it's been like, one thing after another, we think we, we had a meeting, emergency meeting, we'd all have to take leave, go to tribal council, things are resolved, employees run out there again, next day...
We have a special, we need to deal with that, man.
Then they passed a resolution, essentially suspending the board commissioners. Our authority was over the executive director, and that agreement, which is the law, there's nowhere in there for you to suspend the board commissioners. If you do it, it's the same way as removing the tribal executive board member.
Termination.
You have to notify each one in writing of the so-called allegation charges against them, and have a hearing within ten days. There is no way, even their own attorney, our attorney, said that's not legal. And so if it held things up, and if it's been nonstop...
You have two tribal, you have two tribal executive board members that sit on the board of commissioners. Sure.
And so we had, um, when the chairman said we were suspended, and then Michelle was out of there, they appointed a director who re-rocked employees that were terminated back to work.
First of all, that employee appointed himself as director, and then the tribal chairman, oh yeah, yeah, we'll have you be director, after he appointed himself.
So they come back and they air these employees back.
That were terminated, or caused.
Once we had the meeting, the next meeting, we, uh, put Michelle back in charge. And then we couldn't run payroll, we had to do a manual payroll, because in that system, today I heard that there was no authority for ACH for them to do payroll, but I had heard a different story, that somebody had gone into the system and revoked access for some of the credentials. And so after three attempts to do payroll, we had to do a manual payroll, I signed all those checks at like four-thirty that day, employees all gone, and I started work next day, and they were raising hell with the council that they didn't get paid, and going to HUD, you guys got paid on that. Just because it wasn't direct deposit. I mean, there's an employee there, um, countless hours, that busted his butt, continues to bust his butt, went above and beyond to get this, to get the employees paid. So the next issue was the, the chairman said we were suspended, so it was a payroll week, a lot of people get manual checks, contractor checks. So we couldn't do anything.
Sign checks?
All of a sudden, um, the vice chair took over, got the legal opinion, and their attorney said, they're not suspended, there is no provision to be suspended, that we have no authority. So at that point, they did the payroll with checks, and contractor checks, we signed them off. And then you think back, then, then they all recognize Michelle tried here, there's an argument back and forth, whether we say they have to acknowledge the position, that we have authority to hire and fire that employee supervised by us, because it's a disagreement on it. So now, as of last Monday, Michelle, head of director, we tried to appoint the director, we shot that dust down. Then today, with our accountant, two of them, we found out the drawdown system for HUD, which is ELOX, we had nobody that can draw funds down. And she gave a date of two to three days that housing would run out of money. And again, that's not our problem.
We didn't cause that.
And then everybody, if you're on Facebook, and you're one of the lucky few that friends with Justin and Bree, he posted slamming the board commissioners, he put our stipends, which I don't care, they're, they're legally earned. Like Robin said, there's a whole ton of boards that have that set pay by resolution, and today we have a housing meeting, Justin and I hit the head, and so did Robin and I, and I said, I said, I said, I don't know which ones are housing right now. I said, what the hell is your credit boards? Let's throw it on the table, bring them all up. I said, put tribal credit out there first. I always say tribal credit, because I know they need weekly. We normally, most boards, we get twice a month. But we've not put anybody, plus, in the outside, he asked his board commissioners and the tribal executive board, he tried to get our accountant to release information on the board commissioners, and he also e-nailed an employee there, and she gave him that information. And I told him today, I said, you have no authority outside of this meeting as commissioner. At least your authority as a commissioner and as a TED member. I said, you're, you're at meetings saying that we're excluding you from being involved at the housing. I said, today is only your third or fourth meeting, you guys have showed up in four months. They're not even attending, and they're telling the people that we are excluding them. I mean, so today was, it was pretty heated, I called Dana, I said, it's not you. Justin was the one saying at the meetings that he's being excluded. He's backing us for, we had two emergency situations in order, that we used the veteran home to provide emergency home security. And he was upset, because he wanted us to bypass that waiting list for a sister home. And he didn't make his way, and August started that. And then we were at, one of the board meetings, and Roxanne Morrell brought up about the day before a contractor come in and said, there's been no bids put out since August of twenty-four. I just went, I found, I started looking into it. There hasn't been any business, there's been no bids out there, contractors, they're using a select few contractors. So I started, I went to the woodpoint community, copper community, tribal executive board, speaking on this. And, um, all of a sudden, you know, I get a, Wayne gets split in there, he calls me and leaves a threat email on my phone, threatening me, and I recorded it, I showed it, about, um, calling me bullshit if I'm a man, do that, or whatever, but, that's because it's getting out there, though. There is, contractors are not being, if you look in the papers, have you seen any bids? There's no bids for housing. My work, my wife worked at housing for years, and they had bids every week, no bidders. There's no bids. All of a sudden, I started talking about it, and lo and behold, they're putting bids up on the wall at housing, not out of fashion, so contractors hopefully know, they happen to walk in or they're pulled by employees. Now, we had, um, the executive director's son has a contracting company that got that, uh, paper for housing before we even got on, and they've been delaying his work on it. All of a sudden, they find Michelle, this was bid out in newspaper.
Now they wanna bid it out, after that already...
No, it was bid out, and nobody knew, the board commissioners didn't know, the director didn't know. But thank goodness, that same person was the board bidder again. But, um, it's just, um, a mess. What it, what it looks like is, like, if I had my house, that I moved out and it's looking damaged, instead of bidding that house up, they're breaking that bid up into smaller bids, and they're avoiding the procurement process, and they're going sole source contracting. And that way, they're getting quotes of whoever they want. And most, a lot of people don't give the, get the opportunity to bid on it. So we hired a private investigator that's a retired, um, previous FBI employee.
White collar crime.
Um, specializes in white, white collar crime. He met that one day with us, and already he was picking up stuff. And all of a sudden, from that day, there's some, April twenty-ninth, they're moving through. All the pressure, the bullying, and everything has picked up, and they changed, they changed the way they do things, which is, to me, micro red flags, if you're doing things right, you don't change anything. Well, they started changing a lot, purchasing, procurement, things have changed.
Trying to do it correctly.
Yeah, and today, there was a training on procurement with one of the accountants, they're, um, so I know there's wrong things, and they're trying to stop us from having an investigation with a threat of like abolishing, that was a threat a week ago, was abolish FPK, do away with missions, and housing would become a trouble program, answering to them. And all these same issues that are accusing us of, board stipends, the meal very much, the, um, travels, whatever else, that has always gone on. The last board commissioners, we had Rice Perk and the more than, the same thing.
It's the same thing?
I mean, it's no different, but all of a sudden, with us, it's an issue. And I'll, I'll stand by my credibility, you don't see me on bars, you don't see me running around. I mean, I don't travel ninety percent of the time. If I say something, I'll back it up. And I've been, I've been screaming that in chairman's office over, over doing my job that's right, pointing out on the microphone, and they're trying to do that same thing right now to bully us, to be quiet and do nothing. We've been over to the council many times, and Marva Chapman two, three times, said housing's a joke. We're trying to fix that, but every time we try to make positive moves, staff go running into them, not all staff, this...
No, not all.
It's like a slot few that do that, and then they come back, and it's always something thrown in the way where we can't do our job. And all we're asking for, people, you go to work, and do your job, you're hired. Fifty, there's over a hundred houses boarded up. We went to one of the...
All of policy.
We went to one of the meetings, Marva's in the normal, said it's a house by her, where she lives, that's been boarded up over six years. So all these hundred and less houses that are boarded up, that's about a hundred people on the waiting list. Also, when those houses are boarded up, who pays for the utilities, the heat, electricity, the...
Water.
The water, housing pays for it. Those houses should be put up for bid, flipped around, and people put into them.
Yeah, I have a quick question. So if all the cuts kind of coming down from, um, with the new presidential administration, um, have you heard or read anything that will be affecting HUD, specifically your Native American, um, population?
We haven't heard anything, okay, but he did cut the Native Hawaii cost.
Because I stopped off, I was reading, I was reading on some of the, the legal, legal information off of, um, HUD's website, and, um, what's the one-year, the one-year, um, application, or is it a one-year budget? Do you see it in the mail?
Yep, every year.
When, when is that submitted, or is submitted, or... Does that have the, um, the fiscal, is there a budget that's attached to that?
Yep.
And my first is when housing's new fiscal year starts?
So is that, um, available for viewing, the public?
Once approved, they have to approve it.
Because I was just curious if your stipends, like your need stipends, are those budgeted into your, into that, or does that come out of tribal funds?
No, does that come out of tribal funds? I do wanna touch a little bit, um, I'm not sure where our stipends come out of, I think they're budgeted, but a lot of housing runs on grants, okay? And so those are federal dollars. We also have a, a, a fund that's called, what is it, non-program funds. So non-program funds are, are income that the housing generates through rentals, and...
Yeah, that's always, how many rentals are they paid?
That's a good question, I don't know. Here, here's the thing, though, is that at one point in time, we had over one million dollars in non-program funds, however, five hundred and sixty thousand dollars was paid out to, for forensic audit. There were three audits that were completed, and each one roughly is around two hundred thousand dollars. Then we had to turn around and pay back, uh, the funds, federal funds that were used by the previous director and finance director that were unallowable, they were disallowable, so we had to pay back to the feds with our non-program funds. So that's about six hundred thousand dollars. Now, if you got on this hand, everybody knows about all the homes that were supposed to be built up on the hill, right? So we had that, while the homes were torn down, before they even broke ground, an environmental assessment was supposed to have been conducted. That environmental assessment was not conducted by housing. Instead, they went ahead and they broke ground, and they laid the foundations, and then they found loads. So everything came to a screeching halt. Feds told us, you guys broke ground without doing that environmental assessment, you guys spent about six hundred thousand dollars on that, you need to pay that back. So we have, we're lucky right now, we have seven thousand dollars in non-program funds.
So, okay, so when you're submitting this one-year annual, um, application and budget, is this, what's happening right now, kind of like the partners not getting along, is that gonna affect the application and the approval, and it depends on who's signing off on it, who's paying the other?
Well, it's already been submitted, and it was signed off by our acting director and accountant, Michelle, so it's been submitted, but if we get any, anything back from HUD, saying, hey, you guys need to go and fix this, or fix that on our application, we don't have anybody right now that can go in there and do that. My other concern is, if somebody decides to go straight to HUD and say, hey, you guys got a big mess on Port Pet, and your, your tribal executive board, your board commissioners are not giving a call, they're blowing heads, all this money's been, been spent, and what are you guys gonna do about it? HUD can come in and just basically shut us out. They have that authority to do that. So it's in everybody's best interest for us to, to, we have to agree to disagree, but I will, I will not agree to something that's... but I will, I will not agree to something that I don't believe in. And that's me, me personally, as a board commissioner. So I, I worked with the majority at the last meeting and agreed to those three names that were submitted. And my, my recommendation for number one was Michelle. Michelle Troyer, as our acting director. But somebody else thought, "No, Iva would be better, she's got the experience." And it's like, okay, if the majority decides, then let's do it. So we agreed on those three names, sent them to TDB, they didn't like any one.
Wait, one thing, you're talking about lost funding. Missing the housing authority has lost, will lose the 500, or whatever?
Is it 35 million or 500?
Seven million that they're losing, so they lost those because of two things. One, late audit. The second item was repeat finding. So, the audit, we found out today why it was late. So, last board commissioner, when all the heat was blown up over the three different COVID findings in the season, they on their own initiated the forensic audits, starting to know the cost. So, that came out of not over. So then the audit, can you wish to tell them that sending audits are completed? So, the delay in commission of the forensic audits resulted in audits being delayed. And so, according to those stipulations, for the 1000 employees ineligible to receive those for the next few years. Even though one of those employees was on the tribal council, that's not true, but our accountant told us, "It is true that you guys will lose those for the next few years."
Yeah, we're not always able to address that.
But the only thing going for us is there's a lot of vacant jobs which will carry over. We've never had a full staff since we've got there.
Is there something where you can read those audits for the repeat findings? What are the repeat findings?
It has to do with the procurement and purchasing, the same thing that we hired an investigator for. So there's no accountability of their supplies and materials.
Yeah, no inventory.
Five-by-five furnace here, they have no tracking where, like, did someone take it? Did it actually go to the house?
So, they're coming on a page and reporting over a certain amount? Is that, that's the tribe's thing? And so housing doesn't do that?
No.
No?
They have to tag all of our equipment that was over, what was it, over like, over 5,000?
So a lot of inventory.
They have to tag their inventory on their system.
It's like cheap supply with 2x4, 2x60, whatever furnaces, how water takes. But we have a lady here that's working on site, essentially, this is, she's a wide open board, they have a DPC code, do this to us, you scan that, and goes this house, right? This house has six 4x60 cheap products. So they will start having that. That's another thing that's changed.
We don't have it now, but.
Yeah, when you're in the hospital room, and you're helping someone, you're scanning everything located that goes on a person or council, or whatever.
Well, you see if you.
There's still everything like tested, so you can understand that code system.
And I had my knee surgery, they had this like accordion thing, like this, back and forth, all this stuff they're doing. They give you an aspirin, click, they pay for that aspirin. If you drink a water cup, you get charged for that too.
So what are the repeat findings of the procurement and inventory? What's another repeat finding?
That was on my lunch. You have to lay out and repeat finding, so findings, I mean, if you address them, find, if you don't address them, and then you come back with the next audit, and you have the same thing, they weren't addressed. And now, we are resolving it. Housing has a lot, a lot to go over.
Yeah.
And I don't know, maybe, maybe they get rid of us, but it's not because we're inept, not because we're.
Incompetent.
Corrupt or anything.
Yeah.
It's just that these findings, the findings and the standard.
Points for workers.
Well, one of the things that they, that was, I was looking at one of the graphs that they submitted, and there were like 38 points that you could score up to for that graph. We got 10 points out of the whole thing, so we didn't get that graph. One of the things that they've said in there, that somebody keeps saying is, "Well, it's because you guys have a high turnover rate in your executive director." True, we do, but we have to find somebody that can get in there and do the job that was supposed to be done.
They won't be able to do their job if people keep complaining.
Nobody wants to touch it with a 10-foot pole.
Yeah.
So the policies for updates is updated and moving the policy. And the only important thing that we have is the director.
Yep.
Okay, and then, so, the directors try to implement these changes, and the people, employees and the contractors are not liking these changes or updates. So they go to four.
Tribal board.
Tribal committee and. Uh, so it's all, I guess, kind of.
It's not the contractors, it's the employees are allowed to bypass chain of command. Contractors are. Contractors only going to them because they're not getting paid, which is rightfully so, but it's because of interference with housing is why they're not getting paid. The day-to-day, so in that 3A agreement, it says the tribe will be at arm's distance. Well, they're not at arm's distance together. They're like, hugging us real tight and close.
Well, is the 3A agreement settled upon now, or is that still going back?
No, they're trying to change it.
They're trying to change it.
They want to terminate the board of commissioners, if they feel like it.
Do these houses, I mean, do these TV kind of realize that some of them won't be back on this coming winter?
I think this is, this is one of the most political years I've ever seen.
Yeah.
And it's everything about votes.
Okay, I'm getting off subject here, I'll quote a word. Is that all you have, before your report? Or do you guys want to report, Kels? Getting late, we're here.
No, I think we covered everything.
I think we covered everything.